Take up our 6.9 item. A, consideration of interim urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on new agricultural and cannabis cultivation projects. And B, consideration of letter to the Governor Newsom requiring, requesting a halt on new cannabis cultivation licensing statewide. And C, consideration of requesting the Lake County Drought Task Force discuss draft and provide ag cannabis guidelines during drought conditions. And D, consideration of discussion of other actions regarding drought. And this was brought forward by Supervisor Sabatier, so I'll let you take it away.
All right. Thank you very much. There's, I'm going to review a couple of things, but first I want to kind of preface the entire thing with what we're experiencing today and my belief and the belief of many scientists is not something that we're going to see disappear and never come back to. This is something that we have to figure out how to live within the medium that we're dealing with. Expanded droughts, extreme weather where one year we might get a whole lot of water and one year we will get absolutely none. It is not about a predictable, stable environment at this moment in time. It's about chaotic type of situations and unpredictable situations. And so I just want to bring the discussion to the board to figure out what it is that we need to do to best protect the future of our communities. And that includes our residents, making sure that they have access to drinking water and whether that's through their water purveyors or whether that's through their own private wells. And that's to ensure the continuity of our economic basis, which is agriculture as well as our other businesses that are in our community. This is climate change. Whether you want to agree that this is man-made or not is not the discussion. It's, it's what's happening. It's what we're seeing in the trends of our temperatures and our water and our rainfall. And we have to at least have the discussion to figure out how to act now rather than act after the fact that we are in a position that we can't go back. I do not want to cross the line of point of no return where we're looking back over our shoulder and saying, oops, we made a mistake and we acted too late. I accidentally seem to have done something in my discussions. I'm seeming to have stepped on everybody's toes. I think I happen to have finally successfully brought our traditional ag and cannabis folks together. But I think it's, it requires all of us to come together in order to have this discussion because it's a very serious discussion. And so I'll go ahead and share my screen and move forward with my presentation that There we go. So when you go to drought.gov, it says that 100% of Lake County is in a D2 severe drought. Grazing land is inadequate. Fire season is longer with high burn intensity, dry fuels and large, and I can't read because I have the rest of my zoom on here, large fire spatial extent. Trees are stressed, plants increase reproductive mechanisms and wildlife diseases increase. This is as of April of 2022. 29.96% of Lake County is in a D3 extreme drought. Livestock needs expensive supplemental feed. Cattle and horses sold, little pasture remains, fruit trees bud early. Producers begin irrigating in the winter. Fire season lasts year round. Fires occur in typically wet parts of state. Burn bans are implemented. Water is inadequate for agriculture, wildlife and urban needs. Reservoirs are extremely low. Hydro power is restricted. Back in October of 2021, this was closer to 75% of Lake County. So prior to the rains. So the rain that we received back in December has made an impact, but the amount of rain that we received last year was not enough to be called a normal year for rainfall. Here is some of our rainfall. This comes from the U.S. Drought Monitor. In 2020, I have all of the different areas that have been collected for information as low as 4.35 inches in 2020 in southeast Clear Lake and as high as 20.48 inches in southeast Middletown. I'm actually surprised at the wide spectrum of precipitation that is received just in the single county, but it shows that different areas have different climates. In 2021, those numbers somewhat doubled, sometimes tripled. In Clear Lake, it was 13.13 inches and in western Upper Lake, it was 36.53. And I'm not going to go through every single one of those numbers, but it's just to show you the range of the difference. And yet still in 2021 or in 2022, after seeing the increase of precipitation in 2021 in comparison to 2020, we are not looking good when it comes to the drought and what's happening in our environment. The average county rainfall is typically between 32 inches and 38 inches. So even in 2021, our average, our approximate average rainfall was about 10 inches, 10 inches shy of the maximum that we usually see. And in 2022, January through March were some of the driest months that we've ever seen in recorded history. A full lake is approximately 8.0 Rumsie. Last year's low for our lake was negative 2.5 Rumsie. Our current year's lake status is currently at, or yesterday, I don't, I didn't even look what it was at today, been busy, is at .34 feet Rumsie, which is a full three quarters and actually a bit more than that of a foot lower than last year at the same date. So our, this is again to discuss the lake situation. We also got a report from Water Resources that we are estimated to reach our low of 1976, 77 lake levels. Let me continue on here. The population of 1976, 77 is not the same as it is today. So what's being drawn out of our lake is much more substantial than what was drawn out of the lake back then. This is a report from MyDryWell. It's storymaps rgis.com, but it comes back directly from mydrywell.ca.gov. And I looked at every single one of those red dots. It actually gets pretty thick in the Middletown area on the southern end. There's probably about 10 of those dots in that red blur. There was only one that was from 2016 where the problem was first observed. So I canceled that one out as an outlier. And the other one that was not, as of 2021, it was reported that there was some issues with their wells was from 2020, which as I just showed, was already a year of extreme drought. And these are only the wells that have been reported. We have had a lot of anecdotal conversations with many constituents about such things as well. Some of the actions that we've taken due to the drought, we've declared an emergency due to drought conditions in May, on May 6, 2021. On June 8, 2021, I brought a discussion similar to what we're discussing today, except today I'm offering an actual ordinance that comes along with it. The discussion was not very robust. I think that in all honesty, and I had the same perspective, there was hope that we would be done, that we would not have another drought year. And I, I sit here not wanting to come back to you guys again next year, asking the same question, saying, we're still not done. I'd rather have a conversation and see if there's any actions we can take. We had an urgency ordinance that was approved for all land use projects to provide hydrology analysis before that, and that was July 27, 2021. Before that, it was simply well reports, no cumulative impact analysis on how our projects were going to impact the surrounding area. Projects are great. They move our economy. They create jobs. But if one project takes away from someone else's ability to have drinking water, if one project takes away from someone's ability to do the use that's already been permitted, at that point, we're not doing our due diligence to ensure that those projects are correctly vetted before being approved. On August 24, 2021, we had an urgency, urgency ordinance approved to limit the amount of water hauler activities for cannabis cultivation. We started seeing a lot of water haulers, started seeing signs saying water for sale. I don't believe there's anybody that lives in Lake County that did not notice the increase of water haulers moving water around. There's a lot of reasons for why water haulers were being used. Some was to refill people's empty wells by filling up their tanks. Some of it was because of cannabis cultivation, legal and a lot of illegal. And some of it was for other purposes that I'm not listing right now. But that speaks to the dry well reporting that obviously we were seeing some issues with what was available in the groundwater for our constituents. On September 17, 2021, there was a health advisory on private intake from the lake due to the high cyanotoxin levels. There are people who are on private, well, private intake systems who were not able to purify their water or filter their water enough to make it potable water. We had to get some of our other water district purveyors to help out in ensuring that those people had access. Then we amended the water hauler urgency to include all ag and create limit of times for deliveries as we continued to get more complaints about the water truck situation. Water trucks all through the night, water trucks creating dangerous situations on our roads because of early morning runs. And to be honest, I don't know that the ordinance stopped the water hauling, other than I would say the end of harvest season is probably what ended the water hauling and for those who needed drinking water, rainwater coming in. And then there's the conversation that started, and I'm not going to venture a guess, but I'm definitely going to say it's probably not from the 2020 drought and 2021 drought status that we have tree mortality. I'd probably go back further to 2014 as it takes time for the reaction to be seen physically. But there is no way to drive on Highway 29 or drive around in our communities and not recognize that there is less water for our trees to survive, which have allowed for the pests and the bugs to start killing our trees rather than trees being able to protect themselves. And I'm sure that either I will be corrected by Supervisor Pyska or she will provide some more information on that. But it's an issue that we're dealing with. So then we go to some of our heaviest users that we're continuing to see applications for. And I will say I went even back further. In 2005, I was looking at our crop report. Appreciate that those are posted on our website. And this is where I gathered these numbers as well. In 2005, we've gained about 2,000 acres of agricultural, traditional ag land being used. Mostly that increase has been in vineyard. So I've kind of segregated vineyard and cannabis because we know that pears are disappearing, walnuts, for some reason with the price dropping as much as it has, it's still the same amount of acres. And so I just wanted to at least explain why I segregated out vineyards with cannabis. And they have some similarities. Between 2018 and 2020, we had 330 new acres of vineyard operations. And between 2018 and 2021, 235 new acres of cannabis cultivation. As far as my research and my questions of asking for any future vineyard and cannabis increase, according to our ag department, there is no formal request for increase of acres for vineyards at this moment in time. And for cannabis, there is approximately 800 acres in applications that is currently being processed. My goal here is not to prohibit the growth. My goal is to ensure that we have the vetting tools to protect our environment and make sure that approvals are done correctly. So if we do an ag moratorium and, yeah, I'll get to that later. No approvals for projects converting native land to ag land with an exception that projects that are already in the state clearinghouse for sequel review would be allowed to move forward, but there are currently zero projects. So at this moment in time, a temporary moratorium would not have any significant impact to ag as far as projects that are in the queue. Cannabis moratorium, no approval of projects, exception, project is already in the state clearinghouse for sequel review. I'm going to change that. It said 14 plus projects. It's actually 15. I just went upstairs during lunch just to check in and see where we were. And so anybody that started the process with the state clearinghouse would be able to move forward. The rest would be put on pause. And then a review in 45 days. What are the economic impacts due to the moratorium on approvals? Status of where we are with producing higher standard for hydrology reports. I've been going through some of our hydrology reports and some are really good and some, in my opinion, and I'm not a hydrologist, but in my opinion, just seem a little light on helping us understand how projects will be successful and not impact our local community or our local region during a drought. I'm seeing average rainfalls that don't denote the average rainfall of the last five years, but denote the last, average rainfall of the last 30 years, sometimes longer. I don't know that we're going to go backwards. I think that we have to look at what's happening now and be prepared to deal with now as potentially the future we have to deal with. I think that our standards for our hydrology reports need to be upgraded. I think our review and analysis of hydrology reports need to be upgraded so that again, we can ensure that when projects are going through the process, that they are being vetted to the best capability based on climate change analysis, not the past 100 years, 30 years, 50 years, whatever it is that I've seen in some of these hydrology reports. And again, some do a good job, but not all. Status of where we are with producing best management practices, BMPs for ag cannabis during declared droughts. We've been in a drought for a long time and I have failed to do so, but yet at the same time, I don't think that this is up to me to do so, other than to get stakeholders to bring BMPs to us to set as guidelines. We have to work together because in climate change, we're all going to have to figure out how to sacrifice equally and not fight for what resources are available. We have to figure out how to work together because collaboration is going to be the easiest way for less impact on the less fortunate. And we don't have BMPs when there's a declared drought. For example, we've all seen it, sorry to pick on this one vineyard, but overhead sprinkling in the middle of a hot day is a little absurd when we're in a severe drought, yet we have nothing that we can use to ensure that that practice changes. I want those practices. I want stakeholders to work with our staff and our team and create those BMPs so that then we can hold people accountable for when we're all supposed to work together to help each other during these sensitive times of climate change. And right now, we can't find people and we can't set expectations or accountability when those aren't in the rules. And so that's what my outcome is of talking about a moratorium is not just because. And to me, the drought is definitely something we should all be concerned. And I've spoken with a lot of different people from different stakeholders, different industries, and I didn't hear a single one of them not say that there wasn't a concern about the drought. But my goal is to come up with better standards and guidelines for us to pull off the shelf when we have a declared drought emergency or even tiers of, is it severe drought? Is it extreme drought? Where are we at in our drought status so that we can make sure and ask people to work with us and help everybody? The impacts of moratorium, no change to approved and permitted agricultural operations and cannabis cultivation projects. We hear about this quite often. Central Valley, the allocation of water that they're getting above and beyond what they have access to is now 5%. Some people, as low as 0%, I was told. We're not, I'm not looking to do that. Those that have gotten the permits, those that haven't been permitted to do their activity, I want those people to be successful, which is why I want to have this conversation of how can we do better to ensure their success in the future? Limit approvals by again, putting a line in the sand, saying the state clearinghouse is enough has been done that stopping that would not make sense. New applications can still be submitted. And in my discussions with our community development department, current applications would still continue to proceed so when the moratorium is over, we don't start over from April 12 status. We start over from when the more, we continue off from where we leave off when the moratorium is over. And my goal is not to have a moratorium that stalls 2023 harvest. My goal is to make sure that what we vet and what we approve for 2023 harvest meets a better threshold than what we've been doing. Again, the outcomes of moratorium is create guidelines of BMP during declared droughts, enhance the hydrology reporting standards and review process to ensure that those who already access water can continue to do so with no to little adverse impacts. So as I said, I met with some stakeholders. I met with the Farm Bureau. I met with our ag commissioner. I met with our Lake County Cannabis Alliance. There's, there's no reason to bring this and blindside everybody. Needed to have those conversations and I wanted to have sincere feedback to provide to all you all in the public as well. I will say that the feedback just in, seems to just depend, what is your position? Are you being impacted because you're part of the industry or are you part of the general public? Because it's a very different situation at that point. The general public as a whole, from what I've received is positive. They're very concerned about the drought and they're very concerned about us continuing to add on more during a severe drought, more request for more water to be used. From the ag industry, I've been asked that we, that why are we asking for a moratorium when there's no projects? Well, that doesn't mean that there's not a project coming up soon and I'd rather be proactive than oops, missed something. But that was one of their requests. Another one was that the moratorium would be bad for the industry. It would say that we're not open for business. And I'll just remark that I think that ensuring that all projects care about our community and that we're doing the right thing with the right tools to vet the projects is a good thing. I don't see that as being a bad thing, but I get it from their perspective. And then instead of a moratorium, they're saying, why not just ask us for BMPs and enhance hydrology standards to solve problems? And, and I'll say this, when? When is that going to happen? And I feel that a moratorium puts fire to ensure that we get those out as quickly as possible. We are what's being called a 22-year drought. At what point are we planning to come up with BMPs? Also, we're being told this is one of the harshest droughts in over 1,200 years. Now that covers the entire Southwest, so that doesn't necessarily dictate what's happening specifically in Lake County. But however, we are enduring impacts of that type of drought. For cannabis, mainly the issue was with the timeline that people have had to deal with in order to go through the process, in order to get their licenses and that this would be unfair to suddenly put a pause. And same thing as ag, no to a moratorium. Instead, just request for BMPs and enhance hydrology standards to solve problems. And again, I think that this lights a fire to say, when? Rather than waiting, I want to make sure we get there. And they would prefer no new applications than a moratorium as well. I appreciated the conversations that I had. I'm not going to stand here and be a concrete stone that doesn't move and flex with making something that works for all of us. But I feel like we're waiting for something to organically happen to save us from the drought, like it's just going to happen by next year or it should have happened this year. And again, I feel like if I wait another year and not bring this discussion to a greater audience and a greater context, that, that we may miss the train and, and make future, further mistakes. I want to protect our ag and our cannabis businesses that are here. This is not meant to be as a strike. This is not to say anything negative about them. They create jobs. They create our economy. We are an agricultural county. I want to make sure that that continues, not in the near future, but in the far future. And that is what I have right now. It's a tough topic. It gets very personal for those who are in the industries. I think that we have the skill sets to be able to come back with something, I'm hoping, in less than 90 days. The, for the cannabis side, for the 15 that are going through the process, that are at the state clearinghouse or have already been in the state clearinghouse or are being prepared right now for a PC review, for a planning commission review. All of those to get to the planning commission, to get to all 15, possibly by July 1st, and there's only one more meeting before August. How much more time is there to plant after the fact? So what is the true impact to that industry if there is a pause? Again, the pause is not meant to be permanent. It's supposed to help us ensure that we're vetting things correctly in the future. And so I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to stop sharing and open for questions from the board, if you have any.
Vice Chair Scott.
You're right. This is a tough topic, talking about our drought. I disagree. I don't think this is the way to go about it. I don't agree with a moratorium. We at this point have tasked our CDD director to come back with a new ordinance looking at our cannabis. She's supposed to be coming back within the next month. I think we really need to give her that time to do that. I, I think if we go forward and have this moratorium, it's just going to punish the good actors and the bad actors are going to continue wasting water, using our water. We're going to have more illegal grows. It's just not going to solve the issues. I personally would like to see enhanced hydrology standards, be able to go and attack those people that are punished or fined or whatever, or talk to those people that are out there watering, you know, at the heat of the night or heat of the day. I think we need to have that instead of just the moratorium and, and give our CDD director time to come back with an ordinance. So I think we have to be really careful. We can't have knee jerk reactions to things and I just think we need to be really cautious.
So I said many times in this room last summer and last fall, we have to plan like it's not going to rain. And we have done a great deal of things and maybe you're not seeing them and you know, waiting for things to happen organically, you know. Let's roll back to the EA moratorium and that arguably did this, right? We don't have, we don't have new EAs going in without sequo analysis, without the vetted analysis that we need. So that paused that. But that also triggered the committee that Supervisor Simon and I were on before we had a CDD director to streamline the process, which went into reworking the ordinance. And our new hires, our new staff in CDD is looking at the science detailed, looking at drought history, looking at hydrology, looking at environmental impacts in ways that our ordinances hasn't before and our standards haven't before. So we're just a few weeks away from seeing that. And this moratorium is going to derail that work. We have finite resources with our staff. We only have so many hours of the day. And that is the important work that we need to keep our momentum on. And, and I'm sure if we wanted to ask staff, they would come on and, and talk about some of those things, but we should wait until they're ready for their full presentation. Now, if you have a moratorium and you're only going to allow these 14 projects to go through, the rest of the projects that are in the pipeline wouldn't be planting this year anyway. And I, you know, so you say, what does it matter? But, but they have other things to do. They have to get their state license. There's other planning that goes into this and we're just going to stop that work that we've been, I mean, some of these projects have been two, maybe three years in the pipeline. And it's, you know, we've had staffing issues. We've had turnover. We've had a lot of things happen in our department that through no fault of these applicants or changing our, our, our practices, changing so that we have more rigorous requirements to make things better, I'll say better, for the drought and requirements. We've been doing that work. So to say that nothing's been happening is wholly untrue. And it might be that you're not seeing that and I can understand that because you weren't in our committee, but we did have a presentation from Director Darby in February and she did promise to bring this ordinance. bring this ordinance. And we are going to be working with our industry. And, and the end goal of that is to get to a place of sustainability for our county. And they're doing the research on the watersheds. You know, they're, they're mapping all of those things out. And we can't make this ordinance and this decision, it's very knee-jerk, when we have all this work that we've dedicated a year almost to this work. And then, this didn't go past the ag committee, which is an advisory committee. It meets a couple times a year. This is where we get input from our ag industry. And I know you came to that committee last year, when we were still forming our bylaws, and it was a little baby committee, and it still is, and asked for something like this. But that committee is not staff, and they didn't have the capacity to do that, and they asked for more research. But we don't have a CDD director, so we couldn't go down that road. So yes, the best practice is that, that did stall out a bit. But that's what our comprehensive drought committee is for. And that's why I brought that up last summer, to start working on the long-term plans for these things. And that committee isn't seated yet. It hasn't had its first meeting yet as its new, in its new role to include public and industry. So I think that work is going to come out of that committee. But you're right, there's no fire, because it hasn't been established yet. But once that committee is, is seated and functioning, and has objectives and a mission, then we're going to get there. But I don't see how this urgency ordinance fixes, fixes anything that we're not already working on, and doesn't really change things for this summer. If you want to protect the drinking water, which is what it says here, the illegal grows. I mean, that will make the biggest, most immediate impact, is going after those illegal grows this year, this summer, right now. So, you know, I, this is a long-term strategy. This drought didn't come out of nowhere. It's not the first drought, it's not the last drought. But we do have to work collaboratively, and we do have to come up with plans, practices, strategies, so that we have a sustainable future for all of us. But it's got to be well thought out, and we have to have that strategy. It has to be deliberate. And we can't just pile things on staff all the time. Other things will fall apart, and we have to make that decision. So if we're to pile this on staff right now, we have to ask all of the department heads that are going to be affected by this, what's going to fall by the wayside? And we have to know that clearly before we go into something like this.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, complicated conversation, there's no doubt about it. You said that at the beginning, Supervisor Sabatier, but at this time, I completely agree with what's already been said by Supervisor Scott and also Supervisor Pyska, that, you know, we're doing the work. We've got work to do. If we're looking at a long-term strategy, a lot of different changes need to happen, not just two industries, the entire way we think about how we're living on this earth and how we're dealing with it. You know, and I just talk about the simple things of, you know, can, let's just try something here in the room. Raise your hand if you have a grass lawn at your home right now. Does anyone have a grass lawn around their house? Please raise your hand. You have a lawn around the house that you frickin' stay in? There you go, man. You know, there's little things that are going to look at the long-term opportunities to change this environment as we move through it. And yeah, there are small things. But, you know, you look outside the windows here at the courthouse, you've got grass and other things, it's watered every day. These are other things, yeah, they look pretty, but are they really for sustaining life? No. And these are the opportunities we need to look at it for the long term. Storage of water, I think that's huge for the long-term process here in Lake County. I asked when they came out with this infrastructure bill, Congressman Thompson, are we going to be building dams in Lake County? Can we do that? You know, when I grew up, there was a long conversation about a dam in Dry Creek on the backside of Middletown. You know, where's that conversation going? You know, what are we looking at to do those types of things? The other thing too, coming from a tribal and a cultural standpoint, is we've got the oldest natural lake in our backyard, and we don't frickin' have any control of the water. It just blows me away. You know, maybe we could look at a long-term opportunity where the county and its residents work with the tribal folks that were first, that's our water. And our tribal residents weren't, our tribal communities were not at the table when it was taken, and it was divided up. So how about we work together as a people, and we're talking about rising up from all people in this county, and maybe have that fight? You know, I think it, look at those long-term opportunities. I know, you know, I'm preaching or whatever, but it's no different than what you're doing today to try and get your stuff across there. But we've got to change these things. You know, we've got to look at those opportunities, looking at small opportunities, collect rainwater out of your gutters, so you can water your plants as you move forward. There are all types of opportunities we do. I think the moratorium issue, what really scares me when I ran for this board is economic development. I sat, you know, as a tribal leader as we vote, building our economy as a tribe, as we, we've been able to do now. We were given an opportunity with gaming, we have other opportunities to do things as we move forward. But we've got to look at it holistically as we move forward. And I've always had a problem with water, you know, from the agricultural standpoint, you know. I look at all these things, and I sit around this diocese and listen, you know, from our tribe, I just look at, we were surrounded by vineyards. No one came and asked the tribe, hey, you care if we put a vineyard and allow a vineyard to go right up to your frickin' boundaries? No, because we didn't have any representation. It was just built right around us, because, you know, we didn't have that. So I think we need to look at this stuff holistically. I don't think you're off the mark, but there are things that need to change for each and every one of us in our lives. And, you know, to make sure that we can sustain those things, it's hard. So bottom line, I'm not in favor of the moratorium today. They're going to say, you know, Supervisor Simon's all for cannabis or whatever, but I'm, I'm for looking at solutions from the industry leaders that are in this thing, and to help and to ask them for it. I am not a hydrologist. I know that I turn the tap on, it comes out, because we're part of Caliomi, but always kind, trying to conversate with them. For the south end of the county, we got work to do. I've got to get water to those constituents past the rancheria, yes, but that's been happening all our lives for trucking of water. And so each one of these climates, as you said, is different. So I know there's going to be a lot of comments today on both sides of this issue, and people are going to look at it one way or the other. I know it was just a small handful of people who said they had a lawn here. I got to say, there's probably more than that, or an apartment they're staying in that's got something. So little things like that, I think can make an ultimate big change on stuff. But I'm not in favor of the moratorium at this point on the industries, and hopefully that more will come out of it. It's a good discussion, and we'll continue the work that we're doing. And that's where I'm at today.
Thank you, Mo. And, all right. So I appreciate you bringing this and working on this, Supervisor Sabatier. In my district, in my town halls, there's been a lot of discussion about water in general. We've had many appeals, and one of the biggest subjects is always water. And it's even been more prevalent now, and closer to this situation of the drought, whereas before, there were other reasons to object to any project, or whatever the case may be. But as a supervisor with three municipal advisory committees, each one of them says the same thing for me. And I do appreciate everything that's said from my colleagues, and I agree with you. I agree with the things, the work is being done. I agree with, Mo, that's one of the things I've always thought of, is why, why can't we ensure that the tribes were considered first for the water, and agree with the county, and make some sort of deal? I know it's a long shot, and I know there's a lot of more legalities to it, and it's maybe a pie in the sky for me too, but I think that's an avenue, you know. Teen, I appreciate your words as well. But I think 45 days, a moratorium for 45 days would allow the staff to catch up. I know that they're working on this as well. And so I would have no problem considering a moratorium for 45 days, despite the fact that it would affect some of you here. And, you know, I know many of you here, and I know you work hard for what you do, and I appreciate that, but at the same time, we're at where we're at with this drought. But nonetheless, we will allow you all to come up and speak for public comment and give your statements, and, and we'll try to keep it to two minutes if at all possible, and we'll go from there. So open public comment.
Hi, Board. Thank you. Tyler Mitchell, Kelseyville. As cannabis prepares to assist with the tragedy of the commons, the BMPs, would that be a blanket for all cannabis approved, or potentially to be approved?
I, I think we'd have to look, because everybody grows a little bit differently. Depends if you're in pots, if you're in soil. That one's a difficult task to take on, but I think it's possible to come up with BMPs that work.
For, just as a blanket, just for the whole, approved or not approved? Just, just curious.
I, I don't have the details, and I'm not a hydrologist either, and I think that we need somebody with that skill set to be able to help us create that. Right now, what's created is very vague of what's required.
Thank you, Tyler.
Frank Perez from Rancho Dela Fuente. I've been listening to everything that the supervisor said, and I agree with Supervisor Simon. I think that we can do better with the public conserving water, not watering their grass. I just moved into a new house, and I, I have no plants there, because I know that we're in a water situation, in a drought. And I'm not going to plant things just to make it look beautiful when we're short with water. I understand that. When I take a shower, I'm not in there for two hours. You know, people can conserve, businesses can conserve, and keep everybody working and keep the economy going. There's other ways to look at it than just doing this moratorium where it provides work and everything for the community and keeps our community strong. So I urge that we look at where we can serve, you know, with these different growers, for example, the pear growers. I'm not singling them out, but I knew they, I know they do flood irrigation. Can't there be a better way to water those pears than to just pour all that water out into the ground? I mean, there's a lot of other things to look at besides doing a moratorium and stopping our economy. It just doesn't make sense to me. There's other ways to attack it.
Thank you, Frank.
Richard Durham, thank you. Let me speak. Regarding the moratorium on new cannabis projects in Lake County. As we've seen, legalization has brought us new challenges. This past year, it became obvious that there was a bottleneck in the supply chain, everyone harvested at the same time. This has changed the industry. Outdoor legacy grows will have to become about 10% to 15% of this supply chain. The rest will be done in mixed light greenhouses, which are more sustainable, as the farmer will have three fresh harvests per year, allowing them year-round employees, instead of massive harvesting crews at the end of the season. This will be better for the farmers, the employees, and water conservation. If you place a moratorium at this point, the farmers will not be able to apply for change in their, in their style of growing. Not allowing people to switch from type 3 outdoor grows to mixed light gardens will put Lake County farmers at a great disadvantage in the industry. Allowing the moratorium also affects the ancillary businesses, such as compliance consultants, cultivation managers, and other industry-related businesses, including our own CDD. All persons waiting in the queue right now probably won't be able to grow in time for this year, so making the urgency is unnecessary. And as a cultivation consultant, I did see that the industry flipped last year. And the legacy growers, or the full sun outdoor growers, are having a super hard time selling their cannabis, because everybody wants fresh cannabis. And by, by not allowing existing projects in a moratorium, the ability to change to a more sustainable farming is just really going to damage the industry. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just as a point of information, for this urgency ordinance to pass, it would require four of the five of your members to, to adopt it.
Right. And so, basically, with everyone's testimonial from the board already, it doesn't look like we'll obtain that. So, Michael? No, I'm sorry, not Michael. I'm...
You got it. You got it. Thank you. I guess I'll just pick up where Richard left off. You know, when we talk about being able to convert over into greenhouses, you know, the ability to do recycling water programs, right? So hydroponics, you can recycle the water, it can be utilized over and over again, really limits the amount of evaporation. And so I think with that, what I want to point out is that when we look to you guys as our leaders, what we're looking for are solutions to problems. And I think that creating this moratorium just creates further problems. You guys are super capable and very willing to work with everybody, both sides of ag. And I think that we're looking for ways that we can continue doing what we're doing, or have that economic development, and make the changes like Simon put forward, that are relatively small but make big impacts. I think also with that, if you look at the state of California, the Water Board, their prohibited uses, and what they've set as a standard of how to control or hold as much water as they can, they're very clear about frivolous use of water, right? Cleaning things that don't need to be cleaned, or ornamental lawns and things like that. So those are prohibited through that. And I feel like the state Water Board, being in charge of that just by itself, is, they have a very good concept of what things need to be done. When it gets to the availability of water in this area, Mo made this huge point about the lake, right? And it's something that everybody's thought of or looked at, right? It's a major question in everybody's mind, we have all this water, but how come we can't use it? So again, I want to go back to finding solutions to problems, not creating more problems when we already have problems. And I think that's what everybody is looking for. You guys have this very important job, you know? Tough times make great leaders. And what people are looking for are great leaders. We need help, but it's not by going backwards, it's going forwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Robert Moody, and I'm from Kelseyville, California. I'm actually a new resident of Lake County, and I actually came up here for exactly the reasons that were discussed amongst this group of people. This is a beautiful county with an agricultural community that needs to see the future of longevity. I agree with everybody that's spoken today that progress is being made and will be continued to be made, but I think the emphasis should be on the side of caution. I do not believe that emergency orders should be used to single out individual communities that share resources or have similar impacts. I also don't believe that you should affect small businesses that are, have already been in the queue for as long as they have been, and follow the regulations that you've required, only to be stopped for 45 days. We've, we've done what you've asked, and we're asking that we've continued on the process. BMPs and additional regulations, we've always agreed to. One of the questions was asked, why don't we have lawns? We got rid of them. Like, the fact is, we knew we were using the water for other purposes, and we wanted to conserve. So I really do think that this is an issue of common sense, and I think it should be attacked that way. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
My lawns are very small.
I'm not picking on lawns, just made an observation.
Hello again. Patty Lanier from Noble Gardens. I'm a small farmer in Lower Lake. And earlier today, you guys all got a letter from me. I don't know if you noticed it, it came in at 7:45. And in that, I just wanted to read a little bit of what I wrote. That cannabis is in a constant state of adaptation, because we're farmers. Farmers are constantly engaging with their landscape, the climate, the environment, pests. All of these things require us to adapt. In addition to that, we've had to adapt to the ordinance changes. We've had to adapt to state regulations. Many of us have been operating since before Prop 64. I was a Prop 215 farmer, providing compassionate medicine to the community. Now, I've adapted to everything that the county has asked me to do, that the state has asked me to do. And at this time, I'm trying to adapt to the environment and to the guidance that I received from the Planning Department. I was guided by the Planning Department to grow outdoor. At that time, I had submitted for a mixed light with no light assist. I didn't even want electricity in my hoops. I only wanted to adjust the grow cycle of my plants. Why? Because I wanted to keep my staff small. I wanted to maintain intimacy with my garden and the medicine. I wanted to maintain intimacy with my garden and the medicine that I'm producing. I wanted to reduce the use of water and all of the products that I use, whether they're biological, whether they're good for the environment, whether they are nutrients, it didn't matter. I wanted to reduce what I'm applying to the surface of the earth and what I'm using from the earth, mainly water. I was steered away from that by the planning department and told to do an outdoor grow. Now I'm in an outdoor grow. I always wanted to do mixed light. Now I'm being told I have to apply for a new license. If this moratorium goes through, I won't be able to reduce, I won't be able to adapt. You're going to take that opportunity away from me and everyone else in this room if that's what we impose. And it's based on a discriminatory.
Ms., thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you, I stated it earlier and I probably should have been more direct. Obviously, there's going to, this moratorium is probably not going to pass. There's already three supervisors that have stated they're not going to approve it. It needs a 401 vote. So I understand you want to make your comments, but just stating that for the, so people know.
Thank you, Chair Crandall. And we would be remiss as the Lake County Cannabis Alliance if we did not weigh in on the record. So my name is Sarah Bodnar, Policy Advisor to LCCA, and I want to invite anybody who's behind me who would like to stand up in opposition to the moratorium and perhaps forego your time to speak. So if you stand up in opposing the moratorium, feel free to do so as I speak. The Lake County Cannabis Alliance and everybody who's standing behind me acknowledges that the drought is a problem. And we're standing here with you today also to work on solutions. A moratorium isn't one of them. Thank you for all the board members who have spoke to, spoken to the other options we have, and that's what I'd like to use my time to today, to talk about what we can do together, which would look like true collaboration and working towards better managing our water resources because we are farmers and without water, we cannot farm. So we have a great interest in managing our county's water responsibly. Some solutions we could pursue together. Looking at enhanced best management practices with input from members of the agricultural community that include cannabis operators. Exploring solutions like allowing hoops, which alone could reduce water usage by 30%. That's something we should be looking at in the new ordinance that maybe we had opposition to in the past. Looking at canopy reduction when appropriate, prohibiting overhead sprinklers on other agricultural crops, looking at how we can limit water trucking where appropriate, and also allowing cultivation on ag-appropriate lands where there is sufficient water allowable, or available, excuse me. This idea that some do a good job but some don't is really a failure of regulation, that we might need to require more up-to-date hydrology studies and go back and look at projects and make sure that we have water available that we're using. Drought is a chronic problem, not a new one. And the solutions that you've already taken action on are a step towards solving that, like requiring the water availability analysis, requiring the drought management plans, and doing site specific review. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, and so I'll go to the Zoom room. I have two, two people with their hands up if you can. Michael Paul, if you can mute yourself and you have two minutes.
Hey, thanks for the time. My name's Michael Paul and I'm actually in agreement with everyone here. I believe we have a water crisis. I've got a bunch of toolie on my property that the Big Valley folks are, have an open invitation to come harvest whenever they want. I've got a giant valley oak on my property that's the size of a semi-truck. And I've got about 600 walnut trees that I plan on decommissioning. Those walnut trees use 90 acre feet of water per year. And with the, with my current plans, we'll be moving to cannabis and that proposal only uses two acre feet of water per year. So some projects that are being proposed will actually help the county's water crisis. Comparing the water use of cannabis to other crops, it's clear that this proposal lacks strategy. I hope that the hydrologists of this county can come back with a, a more strategic plan to solve our county's water crisis. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next is phone 6205, if you can unmute, you have two minutes.
Hello, this is Bart Levinson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you all recall, but the first presentation Mary Darby made to you, to all of us in the Board of Supervisors meeting, she said something that seemed very important. She said that previous to her arrival, her staff had not been properly trained to read hydrology reports. So I wonder how you could really effectively have this conversation about this matter today without including Mary Darby and finding out more the status of what she discovered about her, her department's prior ability to correctly interpret hydrology reports and her capacity and ability to, going forward, address hydrology reports. Because the, because the drought is happening upon us, like COVID came upon us, things are happening in real time. There aren't regulations for the planners to look at that look carefully enough at water conservation because there hasn't been a need like there is now. This is new territory. And this is a bit of a matter of scale. One of the projects already approved is a large one in Middletown, that this one project alone is saying that they're going to use two-thirds, the amount of water equal to two-thirds of the entire year's use for Middletown of water.
You can wrap up your comments, your two minutes is up.
If you individually, it's your industry altogether, it matters.
Thank you. Next, Vetsi Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everybody doing this work. I have a slightly different question and a comment. My question is for Mr. Sabatier. In one of your slides, you indicated that there were approximately 800 acres in the applications being processed right now for cannabis. And then in your next slide, you mentioned there being 15 projects of the 235 acres. I mean, I just would like to know if you could correlate that the two measurements, the, if you reduce the number of projects to 15 that are in the queue now, would that equal still 800 acres or would it be less? And given the, the status of the response from the board, I realize this is kind of a moot point, but I just thought I'd ask you. My comment is this. Certainly, we've had, since 2014, we have had express need for responses to drought conditions, planning for drought conditions, updating our, our ordinances and our regulations. We've had a constant replacement of one committee by another committee. I really laud your, your board's long-term economic development programs and everything that you've all tried to do. But I would really like to see you create a literal plan to address all of these pieces that need to be fixed. Instead of having meetings like this where, at this point, it's about this particular part of the water problem. So I just would encourage you to do that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to see any other hands up in the Zoom room, so I'll close.
May respond to. So just to provide a little bit more insight, I believe that at this moment in time in CDD and community development, we have 133 applications for cannabis that equate to over 800 acres. Of those 15, I cannot provide you the exact acreage that those represent. I was not provided that information, nor did I ask specifically for that information. And the 235 was the increase of acres that have been approved since 2018 when, since Prop 64 has been passed.
All right. And so I'm going to close the Zoom room comments and I'll allow the last two here that, since they're standing up. So if you can state your name for the record and you have two minutes.
Sharon Zoller from Kelseyville. To follow what Representative Pyska said, I'm the chairperson of the Ag Advisory Committee and I would like to request on their behalf that this concern come to the committee for their review of the information. By the way, it was very interesting, the information that you gave earlier. And to provide some recommendations to the Board of Supervisors when considering this very complicated project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zoller.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Weiss. I'm with Belovista Farming Company and a member of the Lake County Farm Bureau Board of Directors. I do not speak on behalf of the Lake County Farm Bureau today, but I would like to say that I am pleased to see that the moratorium is not going to likely be adopted. Nothing pleases me more than to see bad policy fail. But on the other hand, I think that Supervisor Sabatier comes to us with legitimate concerns and I think that we all in this room have different takes on the situation, but nevertheless, a concern for the resources that we have available in the county. And I think the biggest problem I have and the thing I wanted to address here is that all of us took time from our days to be here. I understand that the supervisors all have an obligation to be present and that's, I'm grateful for your service, all of you. Thank you very much. But this is time away from our jobs and our lives and this is not the process by which this should be occurring. There are committees that have been assembled and in, I guess in a certain case, not yet seated, but nevertheless, committees of relevance that have been assembled. There is no reason why this could not have been sent to those committees. There is no violation of any Brown Act, reasons related to that, because multiple other individuals who sit on those committees could bring forward language of this type. So that concludes my comments, but I do hope we can bring this matter back. I do think that this is worthy of further discussion, but I think starting with the word moratorium and starting with the targeting of certain industries is the wrong way to go about it. Thanks.
Thank you. And so I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board. So Supervisor Pyska?
I mean, I do appreciate that we had this conversation today and this work is important. It is ongoing. It needs to remain our top priority. And I know you and I are going to be working on that comprehensive drought committee. The idea came to me last year when I realized that we did not have kind of an easy button way for people to even bring gray water into their homes. Not bring it into their homes, use it for their landscaping. But it's those simple measures that each of us can do. But we also need to be looking at all, so then the reason we decided to have this internally is to look at our policy as a county and the ways that we can improve within our departments and our procedures. But now we've, we've found the need to really work with the public and our, all of our industries, all of our communities. And this, this is going to continue to be a collaboration among all of us. And, and it does need to be one of our top priorities as we move forward. It goes hand in hand with our economic development goals because this is what will sustain us. So appreciate that we had the conversation. I, you know, I don't think that this is the right track. I'm always a long-term visioner. I like to develop my strategy, set those objectives, and, and work towards that long goal. And, and we probably, it's not a goal that we'll ever get to because we're always going to need to be improving as we go. We're never going to reach that goalpost, but we just have to stay committed to doing the work together.
So I think we're at a point where.
I appreciate everybody's feedback and I understand where everybody is coming from and I hope that we can come back sooner than later with some changes that will help us better proceed through these difficult droughts that we will continue to experience. And we, we can talk about any of the topics that have been brought up on how we can make those changes. And I hope that we will see some of those topics coming back rather than just talking about it today and then not coming back with it.
All right. Is there any action that needs to be taken or are we just going to let it go?
I have a feeling that there is no action taken.
So then no A, B, and then we basically discussed C and D?
B is gone and C is, I know that there was a complication because there is a Brown Act issue of what's my request from ag and how do I get that to ag advisory board? And so today, I would like to at least put it out there before making a motion saying I'd like to direct the ag advisory board to tackle the subject of BMPs. And I, I think that's the easiest one.
Well, let's, let's look at that. So the ag committee is a group of volunteers who are professional farmers and all through the industry, and we're only meant to meet a couple of times a year. There's no staff. So putting something in front of the ag committee and the industry to get their thoughts is the better way to go. We can't, and this is the problem we ran into last year, we can't ask, we can't put work on volunteers. The work, this work, and even in our, our drought, comprehensive drought group, we're going to have a lot of volunteers, but we're also going to have a lot of staff there. And so as we put together the strategy on how we get there, we have to identify who's going to be responsible for that work. And so we, we have an ag committee tomorrow. We put this on the agenda to discuss, but, but the expectation should be set. That's really all that group can handle.
And when I say come back with BMPs, I'm talking about, give us some, some feedback, give us some guidance so that then the other drought task force can commit to creating and crafting the guidelines. That's a good correction. But I think that the stakeholders know better than anyone what they can and can't do in order to still be successful in their endeavor to harvest a crop that is marketable.
Sure.
And I don't want to make those decisions for them or else.
Right.
That creates other problems.
So we have our, our drought task force group, which has been a working group, which, when we discussed building the comprehensive drought group, we would bring that in as a working group. I don't remember, I, I know that there were civic sparks on that task force group and I believe Deputy Director Delejonis said some of them aren't here anymore. So I don't actually know who's on that group anymore to do the work. But the comprehensive drought committee will have industry representatives, ag, cannabis, everybody should be there and there are going to be public meetings. I think that is probably the better place for that type of work because we're going to have staff there, we're going to have department heads, and we can kind of dig into that deeper and then bring it to the ag advisory committee for further.
Review and feedback.
There you go.
Okay. And, and even though the committee's not created at this moment in time because membership will be coming back soon, I have spoke with Water Resources and I don't know if that's next week or the following week, that will be coming back. But I still suggest that today, we task that task force with looking at those things and, and working to bring those things back.
I do, yeah. I absolutely agree, but with the expectation that it's going to take a little while to get that group up and running. And sometimes if you dump a whole load on something right when it's getting formed, it can stall out. So just keeping that in mind because that, that group was formed for long work. The other thing that was in here or in your memo somewhere was the illicit grows and I brought that up and that, you know, want to look at water users who are unregulated and doing it illegally and really impacting neighbors.
And that was part of my, I guess maybe I skipped straight to, no, that was part D that I wanted to talk. So yes, that is something that I D that I wanted to talk. So yes, that is something that I wanted to at least discuss, because to have a conversation about drought and not talk about the illegal activities that are happening around our communities regarding water would be offensive to anybody trying to do things correctly and above board.
And I heard you say something earlier that I, that I, that clicked in my mind when you said we're kind of just like figuring out who's taking the resources and fighting about them, basically. And that happens also when we're talking about, like, just, for example, the Lake Pillsbury situation and the Eel River, and everyone's worried about specific things, yet forgetting about all of the illicit grows that are pulling out of those two tributaries. And so it's the same thing here. Spring Valley, all of these tributaries throughout the county, people are doing that, and then the folks that are upset about the water are taking it out, and the folks that are trying to do the right thing. And sometimes that gets complicated. And so I'm glad that you brought up illicit grows. Again, I'd really like to figure out something to start tackling that. I know it's a big monster, but it has to be done, you know, so.
And my request for that is, and it's been made before, but I will make it again, we need to publicly share what our strategy is to hold our feet to the fire, to be accountable for taking care of this problem. It's a problem that has grown and grown, and we struggle to make a dent. And I really think that we need to understand how we're using our satellite imagery, understand how we're using our code enforcement team that we've bolstered up and made it into a stronger team, how we're using our administrative fines. At this moment, all of those things have not come together to show me that we're, that we have a plan put together, and I want to make sure that there is a plan on how we're going to attack that.
And maybe we need to really schedule that for sometime in May, so that we're, we can hear from law enforcement and code enforcement and all of our partners to figure out, let all of us know what the strategy is and get our input.
Yes.
And I think the 26th, they'll be coming back discussing part of it, roadmap task force, and that's, has some inkling of it, it's part of it.
In one area.
Yeah, in one area. But yeah, but I mean, that's just part of it, you know, but yeah, I think we should come back in May, talk about it.
Yep.
I think for, are we finished with seed? Should we open it up for public? Is that, this is the next item, right? Yeah. So-
Just in the interest of time, Mr. Chair, you may want to take up a discussion of D too, if you still have that, and then open it up for public comment as to-
All right.
-to everything that's discussed, rather than one by one by one.
Right. Let's do that, discussion of other actions regarding drought.
And that was the illicit grows, and there are other potential ordinances that will be coming. I know that one of my issues that I've seen is, it's very strange to me that we go through such a rigorous process for planting a plant with SEQA and checking water and hydrology reports. But if I get a permit for a well, I can sell all the water I want from my well, and there's no permits, and there's no, there's no prohibitions or anything like that. And I want to see us having a little bit more regulation on those types of things. And that's where our water trucks are going. And so we need to be careful, because water purveyors should not be impacted in a negative way, but at the same time, we need to make sure that what's being taken from below the ground is not having an impact on the neighbors. And those wells that are selling commercially the water from their well, we need to make sure that they're, they're not having the impacts that we are trying to be careful and be wary of when providing these types of permits to agriculture or other projects. And so I think it needs to be somewhat similar. But just wanted to at least state, there's other issues regarding water and that we need to face on as well. That's it.
All right. So there's nothing else from the board. I'll open it up for public input on items C and D. If there's anyone that wants to add or has any comment about what we discussed. Not seeing anybody. I see somebody online with their hand up, so I'll, Betsy Khan, if you can unmute, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And once again, thank you supervisors, and especially Supervisor Sabatier. When, when you talk about all the water regulation, especially the, the absolutely absurd groundwater management ordinance and the grading ordinance, which are totally in conflict with conservation, I would just like to ask that you address and include all of the water purveyors, all of the different types of water purveyors. As it stands right now, the Risk Reduction Authority only has representation from the public water systems, which are county public water systems. But there are something like 80 different water systems in the county. Seventeen of them use lake water, and we have no backup plan for supporting those folks with groundwater for a variety of reasons. So I would just really want to urge you to please include all of the water purveyors. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public input and bring it back to the board. And so with item C-
I think we had consensus-
Consensus, okay.
-as far as making that part of the drought task force and waiting for the right time.
The comprehensive drought committee. The drought task force is gonna be a working group of the comprehensive drought committee.
Okay. I, I'm confused.
We're trying to unsilo.
I, I know I asked Water Resources, and I thought that was the name of the committee, so eventually I'll get it.
All right. So with that, I think that's, I think we're, we're finished. And so we'll close this item on the agenda, and that completes our agenda for the day. So thank you, everybody, for coming. I understand it was a long day, and we appreciate your insight, input, and your comments. We'll adjourn this meeting.